Hello Wakefield, welcome to our town council meeting of August 11th. I call this meeting to order and ask that you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will go to attendance. I have five of my fellow counselors in studio, including myself, and then online, do we have Counselor Chrisley?
No, not yet.
Okay. So there's six of us. Sherry, if you could just let me know when he joins us?
Sure.
Great. Moving on to item four, public participation. Is there anyone online for public participation?
Uh, no, no one tonight.
Okay. And anyone in the studio for public participation? Come on up. So if you would say your name and your address, and then we, Kevin sets a timer to three minutes.
It's gonna be short, sweet.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Rich Noto. I own Sunny Noah's Restaurant in 49 Water Street in Wakefield, obviously. And I saw a proposal for a change in my property, reducing spots. And I'm kinda curious as to how that can be done to me without my notification. But besides the point, it's gonna be very detrimental to my business. I only have 11 spaces right now. If I lose four spots, it's less customers that are gonna come and the traffic flow is gonna be disrupted and property, my property value will plummet. And it's just, it's a big concern of mine, and I wanted to voice my opinion on that and make sure you guys know that I'm, I'm not on board for this. But it's not much more I can say. It's just, it's, it would be very bad for me, business-wise. I'd probably have to close out. And that's about it, guys. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew where I stood. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item five, discussions, starting with Bylaw Review Committee, an update from the chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for, each of you, for your service to our town, greatly appreciated. And in my capacity here as the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, I have just a brief update as to where things are. Attorney Bobrowski, who's been assisting us with the zoning recodification, has another commitment this evening, so he's unfortunately unavailable to join for the substantive details of the update. Just last week, we did publish version, or draft nine, of the proposed recodification of the zoning bylaws. Those are available on the new town website under the Bylaw Review Committee. Version 10 is expected in about two and a half to three weeks. It'll have some minor, mostly typographical style updates is what is currently planned for that in my discussions with him. But the substance of the recodification is absolutely available. Feedback is welcome from any counselor, as well as anyone else from the public. And strongly encouraged, the purpose of the recodification, and this is something that is part of our charter to be done every five years, the purpose of the recodification is to take our bylaws, and in this case, we're focusing primarily on zoning at the moment, is to make sure that they meet the needs of our community as best as possible, and they're updated so that they're also in conformance with state law. Some of the zoning bylaws haven't been touched in decades, and so they sometimes reference things that are out of date, inappropriate, they have the wrong names of state departments, and so they go ahead and make those updates. The purpose is not to make large substantive changes to the bylaws themselves that are not, that are inconsistent with the realm of the bylaws that are already there. So there are some minor improvements, such as clarification for things like economic development, to make sure that things that are available and were not envisioned 20, 30, 40 years ago when the zoning was put in place are now clarified that are permitted, things such as some of the micro businesses and so forth that are now available. So it clarifies some aspects of that, and almost all of those have come as a result of input from residents, from businesses, and others in the community. So this is currently planned. We anticipate that we will be proposing an article to come before this body to be added to the town warrant for November, for the full recodification itself. We're going to also be working with the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're working with all of the other boards that are relevant, Conservation Commission, we've been working with Economic Development, and a lot of different boards to try and make the recodified zoning and other bylaws as up-to-date and reasonable for people as possible. So amongst this is what's currently known as Chapter 190, which is our zoning. It's a bit, dare I say, messy to read and to understand, and it's caused confusion for people who want to do things with their property, and a lot of that language will get frankly cleared up. It'll also be a lot easier to read and format, so the definitions are all together in one place. The actual, none of the maps are changing, things along those lines are all being kept the same. So that, the purpose of this really is to simplify the zoning bylaws and make them more consistent with what is needed for today's community, without making substantive changes. We're not getting rid of any of the, of the districts that are in use, we're not changing any of the maps, the things that have been recently adopted, we're keeping all of those as they are. If there's any questions, happy to try and answer those. If they're substantive, I will defer them to a time when Attorney Bobrowski is able to join us.
Any questions, Counselor Chines?
Just a quick question, and first of all, thank you for the work on this. I mean, I think anyone who's spent any time with the zoning bylaws over the last 20 years is painfully aware of what you're describing in terms of the difficulty following them. It's a big task, and so thank you to you and the rest of the committee. I see Mr. Reed and Mr. Pride here as well. Looking beyond November, are there other sort of non-zoning areas of the bylaws that the committee is looking at for review at a future town meeting?
Thank you for the question of, about other zone, other bylaws. So the general bylaws, there actually have already been several that have been submitted to the town council that will also be presented. They are relatively minor in what they're asking, it's mostly language cleanup, and there may be other bylaws that will come up as well between now and November. So those will be presented as well. But I, my current anticipation is that there will probably be a final report of this Bylaw Review Committee presented, and then this particular committee's service will conclude at that time.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I see that we're joined by Counselor Chrisley. We just got an update about the Bylaw Review Committee. If you have any questions, you can reach out to them, and they will be back probably in a couple of months before our fall town meeting, which is likely November. We haven't set the date for that yet, but you'll be back to kinda talk us through some of the changes that you've talked about. And I'm looking at our updated website that we'll hear more about, but you, all the drafts are on the website for anyone in the general public to read and look at. You're up to draft nine right now.
Correct. Draft nine is current, draft 10 will be out in a few weeks, and the idea is that if anyone wants to see the evolution of the process, and they have a lot of time to do a lot of reading, they're welcome to do that. This process is something that is designed to be owned by the residents of the town. It's designed to be owned by the businesses of the town. So we really are aiming to be as open and receiving of information as possible. We are a group of citizens who have done a really good job of trying to listen to people and make changes that are based upon feedback. There's been, changes have been proposed and recommended not for acceptance and change because they're not in the community's best interest. And so it's something that, as a subcommittee, or as a committee of the town, it really is doing what we want all of our committees to do, to listen and to take action to benefit all of us. And in that way, I think it's a really good example of how committees can work together. And we're so fortunate here in Wakefield, we have so many people volunteering their time to do this type of work.
Counselor Butler?
Sorry, I always have trouble with this. Now, the, what is the difference sort of between the, is this completely separate distinct from sort of the charter review as well, or are bylaws just a subset of the sort of town charter?
I couldn't quite hear the question.
Oh, are by, is the Bylaw Review Committee and like reviewing or changing something in the town's charter, is that also similar, or is that it's a completely separate committee? Because I'm the lawyer, I'm not the lawyer at the table.
I'm laughing at all the people I've worked on and shaking their head in the back.
It's a fantastic question, the difference between the bylaws and the charter. There is an interplay between the charter and the bylaws. The charter is, you can think of it as the constitution for the town itself, and there's actually a separate body, a Charter Review Committee, that gets convened every 10 years to review and propose possible changes to the charter. The Bylaw Review Committee, which is actually in the charter, to be clear, it's mandated by the charter to, to be created every five years, is designed for the bylaws, which are our local laws of the, of the community itself. And that includes the general bylaws, things you're allowed to do, things you're not allowed to do around the town, as well as zoning, which has to do with property itself. So this, every five years is to review the bylaws themselves, which is general bylaws, zoning bylaws, and it can also assist with other bylaws as well, from time to time.
Yeah, and I think this stems from like one of the questions we had with the, in terms of the hiring of the town administrator and of the search committee, was having them look at the town and say like, oh, well, what do you see as odd here? And I think they saw a couple of things as odd, and I'm not sure if those would have been part of this review or part of the overall charter review. Things like our number of elected positions versus appointed and that sort of thing.
The responsibilities of the town councils defined in the charter will be handled by the Charter Review or by any other body that wishes to propose changes to the charter itself. And so that's really a separate process. The town bylaws don't get into a whole lot of detail outside of the public bodies that are created and that are used to manage that process.
Okay. Thanks.
So it's a, it's a great question, and certainly there's an interplay.
So sometime in the new year, in 2026, we will form a Charter Review Committee, and they meet for about a year, and then they come to us at town meeting in 2027 with any changes in the charter that they recommend. Counselor Chines?
Yep, you covered it.
Oh. Okay, any other questions for the Bylaw Review Committee? Well, thank you so much, Dan, and we will see you again in a couple of months.
Thank you very much. And again, anyone who wishes to provide feedback, you're welcome to do it at any of our meetings, or we also are available by email as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill, are you rail to trail and traffic advisory? Is it okay if I take chair prerogative and switch the order a little bit? So we are gonna move to five, see town of Wakefield website update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jen McDonald, I'm the Communications Director here. Thanks for having me, and thank you for your interest in this project. I'm going to review, very quickly, the new website that we launched a week ago today. So I first want to make sure that I recognize my colleagues, Sherry Dalton and Lieutenant Scott Rebelay. They put countless hours into this project and really helped get it past the finish line, so thank you. You're gonna hear me talk a little bit about a domain update. That took most of our IT director's time last week to make sure that was seamless, so thank you to Todd Bowden also. Okay, so here's kind of a before and after snapshot of the municipal site, with the old one on the left and the new one on the right. Our site was about six years old, which in terms of websites is about the end of its lifespan. You kind of outgrow and need to reorganize. We also found out that they were no longer going to support the technology we were on. So it was a great opportunity to hop to something that was much more modern. One thing I want you to notice, and I'll show it a little bit larger in a minute, is down the bottom are the URLs. That's what you type in when you need to come to our website. You'll notice that we're changing from wakefield MA.us to wakefield MA.gov, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Similarly, the police website was redesigned. Again, you're gonna notice the URLs at the bottom. Wakefield PD.org has moved to wakefield MAPD.gov. Their site also moved to the new platform, and the two sites interact much better for our users. You can kind of seamlessly go back and forth between the two. So here is a little bit of the before and after. And the, the project to change our domain to a .gov is actually completely separate from the redesign. I worked with our IT director to time them because I thought it told a better story, the website changes and the URL changes, instead of them happening, say, four months apart. But they are actually two completely separate projects. Our, that's right, time's up. Our, our old, our old domains will forward indefinitely, so no problem if you have any bookmarks, but do try and update them. And it will take time for search engines like Google, I actually Googled Bylaw Review Committee while we were sitting here, and Google still pulls, pulls our old website. So it will take time for them to re-index. There are almost 400 pages on the site, holding almost 1,000 documents. So with that amount of volume, adding technology, adding human beings that created it, there are gonna be some bugs that we find. I liken it to if you were to build a house. You walk in when it's done and you say, this is perfect, and then you live in it and you're like, oh, they forgot to paint that piece of trim, and this door handle doesn't move quite like I thought. So thanks for everyone's patience, we're gonna find some bugs, some things that don't look like they should, and we'll clean them up as they go. One other thing about the, the domain change, which again, Todd Bowden could probably speak to far more eloquently than I, the Mass Executive Office of Technology Services and Security recommends .govs for government entities. Only US-based government entities can be given a .gov domain, whereas anyone in this room could purchase a .org. And there are sometimes sites masquerading as other, you know, legitimate sites and taking in fees fraudulently and what have you. So having a .gov domain allows us to show that we are an authentic site. It follows the recommended format of city-town plus postal abbreviation, that's how you get wakefield MA.gov. One of the goals with the new site was to ensure that everyone in our community could access our information. There are a couple of tools, one front-end and one back-end, that are part of this. One that you can use is called AudioEye, it's on the site. If you were to visit, you'll see a little stick man, and you can click on him, and it allows people to change certain things that may assist them in accessing information, like changing colors, changing fonts, changing sizes. There are also going to be regular scans for accessibility issues, so that the administrators can be made aware of them to try and remedy. But I will say that this is only the beginning of the conversation. There's a lot to learn, not just for administrators, but for the people who are creating the documents that are up here. So I've been in conversations with Mr. Renaud, who you will hear from later, he's our ADA Coordinator, on how we can continue this conversation and build on the momentum, but we're definitely having a more, a better platform moving forward than we did before. So I will very quickly run through some of the highlights on the homepage. You'll notice there are six graphic buttons across the center, and those are actually the most accessed information on our site. So for example, pay, online payments. There are two points of access now for online payments, up at the top navigation, which is available on every page, and there via one of the graphic buttons. Notify Me is how you can receive news and/or agendas right to your inbox. This was a feature with our previous site. They did make a slight enhancement now, where if you are, create an account to subscribe, you can also save forms. So for example, if you were filling out a job application, you can fill it out, maybe you want to come back to it later, you could continue. Public Works, Trash, Recycling, Yard Waste, always in the, within the top five most accessed, so now get to it right away. The Assessing Office Property Information, always among the top 10, so now you can get to it right from our homepage. The DPW Interactive Map, I'm gonna show you if you haven't seen it before. Over on the left is the map, and all of the projects from introductory design phase all the way to active construction are all on here. So you can zoom around, see they're all color-coded, see what's going on, and then be brought to a page where, depending on the phase that it's in, see the project plans, see the timeline, see who the contact is to learn more. And then finally, our job opportunities are also one of the most highly accessed pages. We do have a new business hub that was built with our Community and Economic Development Director, so that new and prospective businesses can have kind of all the information that they need all in one place. I like to think sometimes the little things make the biggest impact, and down at the bottom of the homepage, we have our calendars. Now, the first one is public meetings, we're all familiar with that, that's how someone would find out that tonight's meeting is going on. But the second one is a Public Works calendar. So now you can very quickly see if it's your recycling week, see if the yard waste site is open, see when trash pickup is. That third one is the Senior Center Activities, and then the last one is the Community Calendar, which we did have before, that is also housed on the library website and is managed by the library. And this is a crowdsourced calendar. So if you are having a 5K at the lake, you would be able to submit your information, tell everybody how to sign up, when to sign up, et cetera. If your church is having a craft fair, you can put this in here too. So a lot of people want to know what's going on in town, and this is how you do it. However, it is only as valuable as the information that gets put in by our community, so. Another thing I wanted to point out is the Agenda Center, which is kind of a one-stop-shop for all meeting materials. So this is the most straightforward way to get to it, there are actually many. If you go to the top navigation, again, available on every page, click Boards and Committees, and then Minutes and Agendas, you'll get brought to the Agenda Center. This is just a zoom-in of the Board of Library Trustees. All the committees are listed in alphabetical order. It's chronological, with the most recent meeting for that committee at the top. The agenda for that meeting is directly under the date. And the cool part is, if there are any minutes approved for a meeting, they are in the Minutes column, and if the meeting was recorded, the recording link is in the Media column. So you can have everything you need, from agenda to minutes to video, all in one spot. If there is more than one year's documents, you can toggle. And finally, I just wanted to call out the Senior Center section because they probably had the biggest facelift. They spent a significant amount of time updating their content. All of their exercise classes, all of their resources, all of their activities, card games, day trips, all of that information is now up here. You can find out what the class is, when it happens, how much it costs, how to register. So they put in a significant amount of information, and if you see in the right screenshot, their activities for the day are all listed there because they now have a calendar that shows the same as on the homepage. I did want to conclude to just touch upon the Everbridge e-Alerts, because I want to make sure everybody understands, the news you would receive in the Notify Me section I just talked about is your everyday news. That's the things that are posted on our site within the week. Everbridge alerts are for emergencies, and you may have heard this come up lately because we, on January, July 1st, transitioned from On Solve Code Red to Everbridge e-Alerts, a completely different platform, and you do need to re-sign up. So this is how you would find out about parking bans, boil water notices, it has been used for shelter in place. The Gas and Light Department also uses it. If they're gonna have some kind of planned outage, they will notify users. It's important that you use your street address, and if you move within Wakefield, you update it, because for example, if the Gas and Light Department needs to notify an area of town and you've moved and haven't updated, you might not hear that update. We have increased language offers, offerings with Everbridge, I believe there are 14 now, whereas previously with Code Red, we had four. And this is how you sign up, wakefield MA.gov/alerts, or you could just scan the QR code there. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, this is a big project. Any questions or comments? Counselor Chines?
Just very briefly, I really appreciate all the work that went into this. I, I think the site looks great. I appreciate you just mentioning the fact that the e-Alerts are in 14 languages now. I think that's incredible. And I also really, I know in our packet, we have links to some of like the instructional videos on how to use things on the website. I also wanted to highlight that because I thought that was a really helpful resource. They're short videos, they're easy to follow, and I think they're really helpful. So no questions other than, you know, great job, and I would, I think this would be something perhaps that we should think about submitting to the MMA as part of their town website competition.
Sounds great. And another award, that would be great. Any questions or comments? Counselor Constance?
Thank you, thank you, Jen, this is, this, it's great. I was playing with it a little bit myself. Mike, I do have a quick question. So if somebody in the community had an event that they wanted to highlight, like for example, yesterday was the Wakefield Jewish Festival, who do they contact to get their event on the community calendar? You said it's run through the library, so...
Yep, so they actually go to the calendar, and then there's a Submit Event button.
Okay.
So that gets submitted, the library actually approves it, I don't think you can put like a yard sale up. So they approve it, and then it's there for everyone to see.
Great, thank you.
But again, it's only as good as, you know, we gotta make sure everybody submits the info.
Right.
Counselor Carney?
I hope that's clearly explained somewhere, because, you know, where to go for, to do something is sometimes difficult to track down. People all know that, because I think everybody kind of likes to look at a calendar, find out what's going on when you're planning something.
Yep.
And you'd like to know town business as well as everything else. I know that recently, when I was planning an event, we were fortunate to have the school department tell us what their calendar was and what have you. I'd like to see that all put together in one place, but I think it's a great idea, you've done a great job.
Sure, I can, I can make a tutorial video for that, too.
Right.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know you did the town and the police. What are the other sites? So I saw the library is still a .org, and I'm just not sure, like, what other, what other sites do we have left to do, or are we not, is that responsibility outside of your curfew?
When, once the summer rush is over, I am excited, we're gonna redo the recreation platform as well. That'll be a big, big project for Dan McGrath, but I'm here as a resource for him. I have talked to Catherine McDonald at the library, and they do want to revisit their site. Again, sites have lifespans, so, and the school department just relaunched last year, I believe.
I should know.
They, I think, I think at the beginning of this school year, they relaunched. The fire department is... The fire department is within here, so they do not have a separate site.
Okay. Why does the police department have a separate site?
Probably legacy. So it is, now it's kind of one, it's one site, they have, they call it a separate header, but you can toggle back and forth now.
Jennifer, I think you said this, but so the notify me, all carried over.
If you were subscribed before, carried over, you may want to go in and make sure that your settings look as they should. You know, if you really wanted to get town council, just make sure that it's checked off because it was a manual process, so errors could happen, but yes, they should transfer over. I will say the from address is still at Civic Plus, that's who hosts the site, but it did, the part before did change. I think it's listserv@civicplus. So if you're not getting something as expected, you might want to check your spam, just to make sure, and whitelist it.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Chrisley, did you have anything to add? We can't see you right now.
I can see you, you can't see me?
No, now we can, yeah. We just had the presentation up.
Okay. No, I had a quick, just, just a congratulations to Jen and the team for launching a new website. I've been involved in a couple of these projects, and I know they take a lot more work and detailed organization than you may think when you're just using the website. So it looks like a really good facelift, it looks like the functionality is better, and I hear from families in Wakefield that are, you know, very much using website users and appreciate the upgrade.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Great.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, going back to 5B, Rail to Trail and Vision Project, and we have an update.
Good evening, folks. Bill Renaud, your town engineer, so happy to provide an update on Envision Wakefield Downtown and our Rail to Trail project. So kind of give a quick, brief overview. So you may remember, we began this Envision Downtown whole process back in 2018, 2017. We had a bunch of public meetings and focus groups through 2021, and basically because of the large scope that we had for the overall project, we couldn't get the entire project on the Transportation Improvement Program. That's the state funding mechanism for transportation projects. So that's overseen by the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, they decide which projects get on, they look at need, they have ranking systems, and then they also look at the dollars to kind of fit all the dollars in to available federal money and state funds to fund the projects. So we had to start getting creative on how we could start building this out. So we started actually off by peeling off portions. So you maybe remember Albion Street, Streetscape Improvement, so that was a grant-funded project that my team took on, designed, constructed back in 2022. And then I began a lot of conversations with MassDOT around that time because I helped with the scoping, and looked at the potential for trying to reimagine how we were doing this and to carve it up into different projects so we could get things funded. So first one obviously would be like the downtown proper, so from Main Street from Church Street to Water Street, that's one main project. Second project being the, the section of Main Street in front of the Galvin, and then Water Street up to the Rail to Trail. And then we have sections of the Rail to Trail that wasn't built through National Grid, so we have sections that still need to be built, and kind of lumping all of that into that second project. So MassDOT was good with that scope and allowed us to kind of move forward with that as a, as a new project. That project has been funded on the fiscal '28 tip, so I should say programmed, funded, you know, that happens in 2028, fiscal '28, so we have to hit certain milestones as we're moving forward to stay on, on the tip. So today, what we're going to do is talk about the program portion, so Water Street, Rail to Trail, and Main Street in front of the Galvin. I'm joined by our design consultant, that's Justin Kurwitz from Ty &amp; Bond, who's, actually was originally our Rail to Trail design engineers, and we've added the other portions of Water and Main to their contract. You folks funded that section in the Rail to Trail through Full Design, through Opera Funds, so thank you again for that. And I'll turn it over to Justin to give a kind of a brief overview, and then we can kind of tag-team questions that you may have on the different pieces. I have asked him to kind of focus a lot of this on changes to what we saw before because I think for the most part, the community kind of had a general consensus-ish moving forward. So I'm focusing really on what we had changed from what you saw back in 2022. All right? Justin?
Thank you, Bill, and apologies, I plan to be there in person tonight, but I'm home with a sick wife and kids, so I am here remote. I'm not sure I can share my presentation, I just, I would need to have permission to do so.
Yes, you should be outside.
Says the host isn't allowing sharing for this webinar. Oh, here it is.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep, outside.
Okay, excellent. As Bill mentioned, my name is Justin Kurwitz, I am the project manager here at Ty &amp; Bond for the Comprehensive Downtown Improvements Project, which includes Main Street, Water Street, and the Rail to Trail portion in Wakefield. So just giving you a quick background on the presentation tonight, we'll focus on the study area, give a little bit of background into what was previously done. Bill's done a good job of doing that so far, so I'll gloss over that real quick in this presentation. We'll talk about the current design, the design updates that have been done as part of the, the new design that's out there, next steps, the schedule, and then we can open up for discussion and questions. So on screen here are two figures, they're continuation, so the left figure continues from the top, it continues onto the bottom of the right figure. As you can see, outlined here, and I will just see if I can just mark it up here, maybe not. Down here is the beginning, we're at the intersection of North Ave, the Han Street, and Main Street. That's where the project begins, the southern portion for the roadway. It runs all the way up in front of the Galvin Middle School, up to the intersection with West Water Street. At Water Street, it also includes the portion of Water Street from Main Street to about Wakefield Avenue. And that includes four signalized intersections today, the intersection with the Han and North Ave and Main Street, Main Street, Water Street, and West Water Street, Water Street and Crescent Street, and then Water Street and Vernon Street. In the blue here is the Rail to Trail, so that starts between the intersections of Bennett Street and Richardson Street. It connects across the street with a crosswalk across Main Street, and then the trailhead runs all the way up the current rail, rail bed, all the way up to the intersection with Foster's Lane. You'll see in here on the right, there's, there's yellow highlights. These are the proposed boring locations. As part of this project, we're looking at doing the proposed boardwalk, an elevated boardwalk along this rail trail, given the existing conditions out there, and we'll talk about that in the slides that follow. But these, these are really the main focal points, the study area and the project area. In terms of roadway segment, we just talked about, it's about half a mile on Main Street and about 0.2 miles on Water Street. It will include the reconstruction of three signalized intersections, Main Street, North Ave, and the Han, Main Street, Water Street, and West Water Street, and then Water Street and Vernon Street. There's been discussions about the Water Street and Crescent Street intersection with Mastah, about warranting the signal, and we're still working through the process on that one. It also features a combination of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations through shared use paths, off-road separated bicycle lanes, on-road buffered bicycle lanes, and then sidewalks throughout the project. It will feature updated on-street parking and street lighting design, again, to match the previously done Albion Street, landscaped medians along Main Street, and then will also connect to the project that Bill had mentioned beforehand, that meets up at the Lincoln Street intersection. In terms of the rail trail, this will be from Main Street to Foster's Lane, it runs approximately one and a half miles. It will have crossings at six roadways, Main Street, Richardson Street, Water Street, New Salem Street, Salem Street, and Lowell Street. It'll vary between 10 to 12 feet in width, and like I mentioned before, the two elevated boardwalk sections combining for about 1,600 feet of that one and a half mile. You'll see on the right here, a little sketch of what that, that cross-section of the rail trail looks like, so you have foundations that go into the ground, you'll have either a metal or concrete base for that boardwalk, and then you'll have some timber railing is the, the current Envision design, but that's still a work in progress in coordination with its town. And then there's also the addition of three parking lots, and those will provide access from Richardson Street, Water Street, and Vernon Street with significant amount of additional parking for users that wish to frequent the rail trail. So Bill did a good job of discussing the project history, so I will keep this very short and sweet. There was a previous section of the overall, the overall Main Street design that was done by the consultant VHB, that was split up to reduce the size and the cost. And then there was the original rail trail that was done with Linfield and Wakefield, that extended all the way to the Peabody Town Line. World Tech, which has now been acquired by Ty &amp; Bond, and Beta Group were the two designers for that, and that has now been split out again due to cost and the permitting effort and the lack of commitment from Linfield. So both those smaller segments, the Wakefield Rail Trail and the southern portion of the Main Street and Water Street sections, those got combined into this project that is currently being designed by Ty &amp; Bond. So the project to date, so we, we had the over-the-shoulder review, which is a process that Mastah likes to see before the first design submission goes in. This is more of a pre-submission to make sure that they're, they're on board with what's being done, discuss some of the design elements, the estimate, and then see if there's any kind of design justifications in terms of making sure that they meet all the criteria that Mastah is looking for. So that submission and that review was done in March of 2025, and that was, was held between Mastah, Ty &amp; Bond, and the town of Wakefield. Subsequently, we had an updated survey done that certain things have changed along the corridor, and there were a few things that were updated. We did a field walk to review that, the current survey we had, and just did some updates in June of 2025. And then currently, there was the rail trail clearing going on last month, and that is just enough, just enough clearing to get a boring rig in there, to do soil borings, to understand what the subsurface looks like out there. So those clearings, just, just to be able to drive that rig through that rail bed, but no major clearing being done out there. And lastly, we had the Traffic Advisory Committee last month as well. We presented the same general presentation, the role plan, the estimates to the committee, answered questions, had a discussion with them, and discussed the next steps, similar to how we'll do it tonight. The current design, there's a role plan that exists, it features the entire corridor to scale, and it focuses on the roadway as well as the rail trail portions of this. There is a preliminary estimate that has been put together for this, the current construction cost of the entire project is approximately $32.3 million, and that includes some contingencies. And when we talk about contingencies, those are ensuring that certain things get factored into this while we're still at the early design phases. Early design stage, we want to make sure that some of these things get included in that, that first number that goes to the project, it's attributed to the project at the first design stage. So some of those include 20% for construction, construction, and that would include things that aren't necessarily included, the minor, very fine details that don't get included in that, that first preliminary design. Administration in terms of Mastah being able to carry out this project and construction, traffic police, all your police details, utility relocations, while there doesn't appear to be too many during this project, there still will be some, so that's 3% of the overall cost, and then inflation at 4% per year. As this is, as Bill mentioned, this is going out towards 2028, so we want to make sure that the, the construction cost is a current number for that, that design year. And then the other part that was included, as I mentioned before, the draft design justification workbook, this just verifies design features, making sure that this is built to Mastah standards. Mastah, while they'll be funding the construction, they like to make sure that we're, we're designing this to current standards, and there's no, nothing that falls through cracks in terms of ensuring that there's proper safety and accommodations for all users on this roadway and rail trail. Only current design exception that is part of the preliminary design, there's a mid-block crosswalk at, along Water Street in front of the Bank of America, and that would be consolidated just to, to space out the crosswalks better and allow for better access in desired So just jumping into some of the design updates that we have, the first one being Main Street, there were, in the original design, there was a 14-foot traveling in the southbound direction, and I should note that north is to the right on this page. Mastah is asked that this get be reduced to 11 feet, and just adding an additional three-foot buffer through paint. And this allows the parking lane here to have a little separation between, between the traveling. So you'll see that the traveling here is 11-foot lane, you'll still have parking on the west side of Main Street, and then just a little striped buffer to allow doors to open for parked cars, and a little separation between vehicular traffic and parked vehicles. Water Street, the bike school accommodations along Water Street originally featured a shared use path, and that, that ran on the north side of Water Street. However, due to some of the right-of-way constraints out there and the buildings that exist at the, right behind the sidewalk, adding any, any sort of buffer to that, and buffer meaning landscaping, brick banding, any sort of thing that separates the curb, so the vehicular traffic from the actual shared use path and travel for pedestrians and bicycles, there wasn't an adequate buffer there, so that, that became the reason for the switch to buffered bicycle lanes. So here on Water Street, for this section of Water Street from Main Street to Wakefield Avenue, we'll see an 11-foot traveling, a two-foot painted buffer, and a five-foot bicycle lane. This still maintains all the proposed parking that was originally designed out there, and then it will shift, as you can see here, it will shift to a shared use path at the drive, Smith Drive, heading westbound towards Main Street. This is one of the designs here that I wanted to bring some attention to. I know Mr. Noto had already discussed some things in the public comments. I just want to, you know, mention this from the start, this is just one proposed alternative. This is still in, in deep development with Mastah, with the town, to ensure that we provide as little disruption to Sonny Noto's as possible. But based on a recent fatality in 2024, it was actually at this driveway here, not at Sonny Noto's, but the driveway next to it, there was a fatality with a vehicle pulling out of the driveway and a pedestrian walking the sidewalk, where there was just really no distinction of where the sidewalk is and where the parking lot begins. So as part of this, one of the alternatives that was, was proposed was adjusting the parking lot to provide a little bit more separation where this would be now a concrete sidewalk, allow a one-way operation with driveways, as the existing parking here requires that vehicles back out into Water Street to be able to make their movement. So this was one of the alternatives that's here, and again, as Mr. Noto pointed out, this does reduce some of the parking here, and we can talk about this in a further discussion after the presentation here. The other part here is the parking lot to design, so there was a lot of angled parking that exists on Main Street and Water Street, and as part of that, shifting to on-street parallel parking, improvements to the existing public parking lot can be made here to maximize as much parking and account for any parking loss on Main and Water Street. So here, just walking through some of these design cons, these design elements, Lincoln Street would remain one-way westbound, we'd actually increase eight spaces in this parking lot, and then increase the aisle width of 20 to 24 feet, that allows the entire parking lot in this section to be two-way traffic. It will also maintain the one-way northbound direction for Smith Street, and then also improved landscape islands will be added. So just talking about the downtown parking supply, we really put into three, three main categories here, Main Street, Water Street, and then the public parking lot. So here in this, in this first column, we have the existing parking out there, broken down by each of these settlements. Overall, the entire downtown in this project has 94 parking spaces, five accessible spaces, and one EV, or electrical vehicle charging space. Under the proposed condition, we have 99 general parking spaces, five accessible parking spaces, and one EV parking and one EV parking space. So you'll see the column on the right, we are losing a space on Main Street. Overall, we'd be losing two spaces on Water Street and be gaining eight in the public parking lot for a net total of five additional spaces provided as part of this project. Some additional updates from the original design. Like I mentioned before, the Water Street, Preston Street intersection, there's still some potential discussion going on. We're working in coordination with the town and with Mast Dot to envision how that intersection would would operate in terms of traffic control. And then the Water Street Eastern project limit to reduce some of the costs and and, you know, keep with the the smaller segment of Water Street. We shifted that from the intersection from Cyrus Street back to the way, or to the west to Wakefield Avenue. The potential additional updates, there is discussion about the Main Street North Ave and the Hunt Street intersection to convert the right most southbound travel lane into a dedicated right turn lane. Currently, that intersection southbound has a dedicated left turn lane, a through lane, and a through right, a shared through right, so three lanes. We would keep the three lane segment segment as part of that, just looking to convert the right most lane to a right turn only lane. That would also help extend the shared use path that's on the west side of of Main Street all the way down to the Franklin Street intersection where there's an existing crosswalk today. So talking about some next steps, as I mentioned before, the rail trail borings, now that the clearing has been completed, those borings will be taking place this month and into early September. And that information will help determine the Boardwalk Foundation for that rail trail. There's a planned public information meeting in September of this year. And that will be held by Mast Dot, and that would be really a a public forum to present the preliminary design that we're showing tonight, discuss timeline, and allow for questions and answers before any, any questions and answers before we submit the twenty five percent design to Mast Dot. We're potentially, or we're, sorry, we are planning on a twenty five percent design submission to Mast Dot in November of twenty twenty five. That'll include design plans, the preliminary right of way plans, estimates, and other related documents. And from there, Mast Dot will have a nine day review period to provide comments. We'll discuss utilities and then get into the utility coordination meeting in the spring of twenty twenty six. And that would include all the utility companies, including town utilities. We'd field block the entire project to discuss any kind of impacts or relocations. And then the plan is to have the design public hearing in the summer of twenty twenty six. And that, again, will be held by Mast Dot, and that will present the the twenty five percent design. So similar to the public information meeting, it would be a recap of what what the input was and then really discuss the the submitted twenty five percent design. Now, just talking about the design schedule, this is approximate as things fluctuate. But talking about that twenty five percent design submission in November of twenty twenty five, the design public hearing in twenty twenty six in the summer, then seventy five percent design, which is that that next stage of design in the winter of twenty twenty six, followed by the hundred percent design in the summer of twenty twenty seven. And we're anticipating a final submission to Mast Dot in the fall of twenty twenty seven with the project being advertised for construction and bid out in the spring of twenty twenty eight with the intent of construction starting in the summer of twenty twenty eight. We envision this being at least two years of construction, depending on the, depending on the schedule here. But we're looking at a completion of construction in the spring of twenty twenty three, uh, twenty thirty. And then lastly, there was one discussion point that came up as as part of this project. And similar to the past history on this, there's been discussion of splitting this project into two different, two separate projects where we have really two different construction methods, the roadway section of Main Street and Water Street, and then the rail trail. Together, the 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 cost savings, it it brings the project from thirty two million dollars as a combined project to two more manageable projects, twenty, about approximately twenty million and approximately thirty million for the roadway and rail trail respectively. The thought behind this, and again, nothing has been determined, it was just discussed at this point. But the the thought process here was the construction methods. It's two different types of constructions where you have a lot more roadway construction, a lot more impact to everyday vehicular traffic where, especially on the rail trail, it's more off road. You still have trucks entering and exiting, you still have some impacts to roadways. But in terms of the general process that happens, that's that's mostly off road and and less impactful. However, the permitting effort for the rail trail is is more significant than the roadway section. Impacts to the design, it would still progress in the same similar manner. It would just require additional submissions as they'd be two separate projects. So like we discussed on the previous slide, those types of submissions, there would be multiple submissions for both, multiple submissions for each project. So you'd have really two separate projects moving forward. At this point, there's been no determination of that. It's still, again, just a discussion point. At this point, the twenty five percent design will be submitted to Mast Dot before anything happens. So they can see the cost, they can understand the the preliminary design. And then there'll be conversations that the town will have with with Mast Dot to understand what the process is going forward and be able to discuss any kind of issues or concerns that the town has. And with that, I will turn it back to to Bill and happy to answer any questions that the council has or any any public input.
Thank you. Bill, anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think the the first piece obviously is, you know, Mr. Noto's concern. I talked to him today about, you know, his concerns. Any type of project that would go on to private property requires easements, just as a starter. So all of that would have to be approved. The design you saw was based on other projects of that had a similar situation, a similar configuration. That doesn't mean that we're not going to talk to Mast Dot and modify it or try to keep it as is or keep it as is or pull out sections of the project if need be, if we can't get it built the way we want it. So just want to keep that as a just overarching theme. So, you know, there are ways for us to construct things the way we want them. I've had to do that on other tip projects where they get pulled out, and we we change scopes, that type of thing.
Counselor Carney.
This plan came prior to the establishment of an Economic Development Committee.
It did, yeah.
And I I think that that's a concern that I think we want to get their input on it.
Okay.
I'm looking at Main Street, though, up up towards the square. And it's looks to me like you're 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 getting rid of angle parking and putting parallel parking.
Correct, yep, that was from before, yeah.
That's a, that's a situation that I'd be concerned about. And I went by Sonny Noto's today, and I know the gentleman was here, but this is not for discussion purposes with him. But there had to be nine cars parked there, we'll get four parking spaces here. And, yeah, and it sets them up as an island, in my opinion.
No, I I don't disagree at all. I mean, I use, I I frequent the establishment myself, and I see those spaces all full every time I'm going in there. So I I see the need for the spaces.
I don't know how you get around that.
But we we'll figure out a way to get around it.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's my job as kind of the liaison between all of this to facilitate those conversations, the changes. And then I'll recommend, you know, obviously, whatever modifications to or to the scope of the project or whatever we think makes sense to, you know, kind of keep everyone's interests moving forward.
My only concern is the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, if if they can get buy into this, that'd be great. That would be super, and if they can satisfy, you know, one of our a very popular restaurant within the community and a good business to taxpayer, I'd appreciate what you could do there.
Of course, yeah.
So, Bill, and I appreciate, I think I was probably the only counselor on the council when we started the envision project. So it's been a long time, so I really appreciate the timeline. And I think for everyone to understand that this is kind of like the first draft, and it will be changing a lot. And you are here, we're not voting on anything today. This was an update for us to kind of give you feedback and to hear from people. And so I think what you've heard and which you've kind of reiterated is we want to preserve parking spaces for our businesses.
Obviously.
And you will take that back. And I think it's a great suggestion to meet with the Chamber and Economic Development. I know there is, I know DOT has their own, you know, public hearing kind of schedule.
They do.
But I think we can go above and beyond that in town to kind of get information out there. So when, when the time comes, I would love some forums for people in the community as well.
Yeah, so they're, so they're, they've kind of tweaked how they do it. So they want to have, instead of just the twenty five percent design hearing where we all talk, provide our final comments, they now want to have like an iterative process. So they're asking to have another meeting, so they they're looking for two. I like the idea of how we did it before, where we had little breakout sessions and stuff.
Yeah.
Which I thought worked well. Now that we've kind of refined the design based on all those comments, you know, we can get, I I think, a little bit more granular on some of the comments and hopefully, you know, address most of the, most of the concerns. You know, I think the plan as we have it is is pretty solid, so.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say this part out loud, the the thirty million dollar price tag is not something that Wakefield pays for.
Correct.
Just want to reiterate that.
Yeah.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you, and I think Counsel Chrisley may have had his hand up as well, if you want to go there first.
Sure, Counsel Chrisley.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Bill and Justin, thank you for the presentation tonight. I just wanted to thank you for all the work that's gone into this project. I think the broad outlines that you've presented tonight, you know, have a lot of strong points. The recommendation to go in, to go in with an eleven foot travel lane on Main Street, the the shared use path adjacent to the middle school for making the middle school far more safer and accessible. And I think the connectivity of the plan between the cars, pedestrians, and the bikes, I think you found a really good, a really good balance there. So thanks again for the presentation, look forward to more of the the public meetings. Thank you.
Counsel Chines?
Thank you. So thank you for the presentation. And yeah, this was definitely before my time on the council because I remember going, going to some of those early meetings before I was in this seat. Couple of questions for you. So, you know, the original vision of the Envision Wakefield Downtown Revitalization Project, you mentioned effectively we've split it into three parts. There is the Albion Street part, which we've done.
Yep.
We talked about this part, which is on the fiscal twenty twenty eight.
Yes.
Tip list.
Yep.
Can you talk a little, I know that's not kind of the the topic of the presentation today, but can you talk a little bit about the the downtown proper Main Street piece?
Yeah.
My recollection was that at one point was on the twenty twenty six tip, is that still?
Twenty twenty eight. So originally, the entire project was on the twenty eight tip.
Okay.
And it got dropped. So in order to get a project back on, we dovetailed it with the rail to trail. So the rail to trail is originally a twenty twenty six project.
And what do you mean it got dropped?
So, so basically, the the MPO, so the the Metropolitan Planning Organization, essentially is a board somewhat like yourself where they go through all the projects that are in what they call the TIP universe, Transportation Improvement Program universe. They have a ranking criteria, they have staff that help them rank their projects and based on, you know, your qualitative criteria that they've developed as their priorities. And then basically, depending on how those rank, they determine how to fit the monies together so that they maximize the dollars that we get from the feds as well as state dollars that are allocated to transportation. So, so they're the folks that kind of make those decisions. Essentially, our project got too expensive to fund it. And, you know, a lot of that was through COVID. You know, material costs obviously went up, but then labor costs became huge. And that ballooned our project. I mean, we sat originally, when I was talking to you back then, at twenty eight million dollars for the whole shebang. So now we're here and we got twenty eight million dollars for a small section of it, right? So the whole project's over fifty million complete. You know, we funded this section design all the way through. So, you know, the the ask to the taxpayer, essentially, there's no additional asks. You've you've allocated opera funds to to get us to the to the the goal line here. The downtown proper, we're funded through twenty five percent design. We have an earmark that we received from our senators and and representatives for about a half a million dollars. That'll probably move that along to to seventy five percent. I'll be looking to award a contract for that fairly soon. And then there'll be an ask on that section to get us from seventy five to the goal line in in the future. But I see that down the road. You saw the timeline for this project, I mean, it's twenty thirty. So we wouldn't be on the tip probably until twenty thirty for the new project. So I wouldn't, ideally, I'd like it to kind of go one to the other so that we just kind of rip the Band-Aid off and we're done. But, you know, once we get into this project, I, we're going to hear a lot. So I think we'll, we'll decide when it makes sense to deploy the second project.
So, so just to be clear, so the 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 downtown proper Main Street project is not on a tip list right now?
Not on the tip list, no, no.
So speaking of the tip lists, you know, we're, you know, we're in kind of a strained fiscal environment when it comes to projects that the federal government is funding.
Yes.
You know, as federal funding is cut, you know, state funding is going to be crowded out in a number of different areas. What is our level of confidence on the thirty two million dollars being available in the fiscal twenty twenty eight tip? I, I just, I'm looking two years out from a fiscal year standpoint.
I hear you, yeah.
You know, we already have the administration in Massachusetts talking about holding dollars back from the fiscal twenty twenty six budget, which was passed, just to see how things develop. I, I, I mean, I'm concerned about sort of the federal and state commitment to any project that we're talking about these days. And so what what has been sort of the communication from Mast Dot, you know?
In the MPO, yeah. They, I mean, basically, they're they're kind of staying status quo at this point. I mean, I I know from other transportation grants and things that were coming down from the Fed and kind of trickling down through the state. You know, Mass Trails is a good example where that money's dried up for fiscal twenty five. They did decided not to award any of the grants, at least to date, because they're kind of doing the same thing, holding off and trying to determine what makes sense. But I mean, I, if I had that crystal ball, I don't have that crystal ball. I mean, we don't, I don't think we all know. You know, if if we're going to be going through multiple budget cycles, I think we're paying attention to those. Ideally, they have always said, since I've been doing this for twenty five years, you design it, we'll build it. So, you know, at some point, it'll get on. One of the things, too, is that, you know, the the rail to trail portions and, you know, the shared use path components in this project, the way it's set up, is a different pot of money. So they don't have to necessarily, so they use a whole slew of things. C Mac funding for air quality to move folks through like zones. So they kind of cobble together all these different funding sources to fund these projects. So it's not necessarily just transportation. So just to kind of give you the overall picture, and the, you know, the, the, the bike money is partially funded through state, like, I want to say like seventy five percent. So that is something that is, as long as it's being allocated from our state taxes, that's happening. So that that helps us with it because we have good portions and good, a good portion of the project that's building significant parts of infrastructure to to make that happen, so.
So then is part of the thinking round potentially splitting this project that's already split?
They've talked to us.
Is part of it to sort of reflect kind of the funding pools that that are coming into play?
Exactly. So you, Justin talked about it a little bit. One of the thoughts was maybe if they stagger a year, they can get things to fit in, they might ask us to do that. You know, I think i- if they were to do that, we would still have a, the whole project would be funded and completed within the same timeframe, I would expect. Because the rail to trail, what's left of the rail to trail is a lot. It's a fairly smaller scope, it's expensive just to, for the materials. Because, I mean, we're building a, think of it like a, a truck's deck across a well, and right? I mean, that's kind of what's going on, or near a well, I should say. So, you know, there's, there's significant materials cost, but the to construct it and to do it isn't necessarily as, as, as long of a timeframe.
And then sort of speaking of the rail trail, and I I apologize, I'll, I'll let you move on. Two, two questions on that.
Yeah.
One is, there was mention of the extension. So if, as I'm thinking about that, if you're talking about extending to Franklin Street, so is that, help me understand, sort of, is that crossing Main Street at some point? Because I know the the rail right of way, I think, is on the other side of Main Street and then crosses North Ave.
Yeah, there's some discussion. So when, when we had our over the shoulder, they had looked at trying to extend bike accommodations. I'm not necessarily a big fan of that because there'd be some parking removed by businesses that only have like four or five spaces. So, I mean, at this point, we didn't include it in the design.
Okay.
Wasn't in the over the shoulder, and, I mean, I just, I'm not sure if it makes a ton of sense without getting like a chunk of land from somebody else. Like, we would need maybe a parking lot that's adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts to be interested in maybe providing us land or something like that. But again, I'm not necessarily pushing those, we, I, I, when we were initially scoping this, I specifically pulled that stuff out because I didn't want to take the spaces. I don't think it makes sense for the businesses. We can't be, like, Mr. Noto said, we can't be taking parking spaces away from businesses to.
Well, I, I think there's that. And then the other, my other concern with that is, you know, you have two like kind of major roadway crossings on the path than if you go down that route. And, you know, if we were going to do, have two major roadway crossings and we have like another mile of like a shared use path, that would be one thing. But you'd basically be talking about two major road crossings to go like another like five hundred feet.
Yeah, and you run into the pin, it's the pinch point, that's the problem. We run out of right of way. That's the, and we have buildings right up against the back of sidewalks, so there really isn't an ability to necessarily extend. Once you get past it, you, you know, when you're getting further down Main Street, you can open back up and do more rail. open back up and do more real, you know, potential bike accommodations down there, we have a nice wide right-of-way, but in the section, it just necks down so tight, I just don't see it as a feasible option.
Okay, and then, so the final question, again, I apologize for.
No.
Barraging you, I apologize to my colleagues. The part of the rail trail that is currently paved, is there any impingement on use of that existing portion as we're talking about these other things? So the reason I'm asking the question is, what I don't want to do is run into a situation where, you know, we have obviously not the whole thing available, certainly nothing on the other side of Salem Street, given the, you know, kind of the, you know, the moisture areas and the soil there, and the fact that we're talking about a boardwalk, but where we do have the paved portion, what I don't want to do is somehow have that be inaccessible to public use for, you know, four years.
That wouldn't be the case.
While we go through the process, so.
Realistically, the sections that are built, we have some parking lots that so ancillary work, and I'm even trying to see if there's grant funding to kind of expedite that. I mean, we did similar stuff where we did the rail-to-trail heads, so we did all that as a, as a grant project, another grant project on top of what we've done. So, you know, the goal is to open this up as quick as possible, right now, I have a contract out to do PED signals at Water Street. Soon as those guys are in, and we repaint everything through and have the crosswalks and whatnot, that, for each of the sections that are constructed, that would be ready to open. We also have some tree clearing and things that have to happen, so there's already been some clearing on the constructed section. Usually what ends up happening is the trees, you know, that's next to another tree can survive, and then you let them kind of hang out by itself.
There's maintenance you have to do.
There's maintenance, and we, yeah, so there's a few of those that need to be done, so that's being scheduled with Park and Tree, but my intent is fall this year to hopefully be, have that open.
And that would be like from Main Street across from the Galvin through Salem, basically?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Counsel Constance?
This has been great, thank you. So with the bifurcated work plan, does any construction begin before 2028, or nothing, no shovels, and so this whole, you know, the Water Street and everything else that we've been talking about tonight, nothing happens until DOT blesses it and we're in 2028 approval?
Yep, yeah, correct, correct. So there are years, I mean, they evaluate the tip every year, and, you know, obviously, I advocate to stay on the tip, right, on behalf of the town, and we've been successful to date, but, you know, I'm always in contact with the MPO and MassDOT about scoping and all of that stuff, we talk about it probably, I would say, a couple to three times a year, so, so I'm talking them through that.
I tortured myself last night, I looked at the 2007 feasibility study for the rail trail, which is on our town's website, and, yeah, it was, it made a, it brings a little tear to the eye, because, A, how long this, how long this project has been discussed and underway, and B, the cost, which was projected at that time, you know, compared to where we are now, but that's, that's the passage of time, we understand that.
Yeah, I mean, if we stayed with Linfield, we, you know, Steve and I were discussing at one point, and this went through you folks as well, they have a ton of environmental that they have to work with, going through Rede Menno and all of that, so obviously, for our standpoint, we have a much more streamlined process for permitting, standard notice of intent, that type of thing. There's no state filings, really, for this, we don't have endangered species, we don't have any water supply concerns, all of those things go away for us, which is great. So, you know, that's part of the reason why we looked at separating it, I mean, at this point, they still, I think they're only, they're only funded through maybe 75%, I don't even know if they got that far, they might just be 25%. So we decided to, you know, peel off, it made sense for both communities, and I think that's a good thing.
So when you do the soil borings for the walkways, you're not testing for environmental constituents, that's just strictly for construction?
Yeah, to hold the boardwalk out.
Okay, okay.
That's what it's for, yeah.
And then, the Crescent Street lights, that concerns me a little bit.
Me too.
Only because that is a busy intersection already.
Yes, it is, and that's something that, you know, Justin highlighted, I want to just get it out there, so folks know that there's this, you know, discussion going on, you know, I can't imagine that goes away, you know, fully, there may be a period or something where we have to do it ourselves, or there, you know, we'll work through something to figure out a way to make this happen. You know, I've run into, so I do work also in the town of Middleton as a resident, I donate my time like you folks do, I'm a building committee chair, and I ran into issues with MassDOT on signals too up there, so they can be difficult to get through, so, but we're gonna work, you know, you guys pay me to work harder than I did up there, so, we'll do what we can to make this happen.
Got it.
And it stays.
Speaking of crystal balls, do you think, if we were to proceed, as we're talking about, and get our 1.9 miles opened and rockin' and rollin', what's happening with the Linfield connection piece?
So the connection would be part of their project, so the way MassDOT works, you have to have, the project itself has to have its own independent utility, so what that means, from, for this project, I couldn't extend the rail-to-trail up to the town line and just stop it, so you have to be able to get on it and off of it. So in order for them to have their project funded and through the tip and scope properly, they would have to come into the town for that small 800-foot section, 700-foot section, whatever it is. And that would be constructed the way we are doing our trail, so, yep, so it'd be through, so MassDOT would fund it through this other project. When that's being constructed.
Yep, yeah, thank you.
I also just want to take a moment to highlight that you found a report from 2007 on the website, so thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
Good job.
No, I, you know, it does, it's heartbreaking, it really is, but, but here we are, you know, you can only look in one, you can only look in one direction.
It's been a very long and expensive, yeah, but we're making progress, baby steps. Counselor Fox?
Since Rich is still here, I spoke to him earlier today, I'm just curious why no one reached out to him at the restaurant or the owner of the property before making the slide of it. I think that was his biggest concern, was he popped up on a report, the very specific design change to his property, and no one let him know, and I don't think he lives in town, but someone told him.
Yep.
You made the report, you should look into this. He didn't have a lot of time, so I was curious how that process is gonna work going forward.
Yeah, no, he's definitely gonna be involved, I mean, I wanted to, I just ran out of time, to be honest with you, that's the issue, so I saw this when it came to the TAC, just around the time, just before it became primetime, that's really what it came down to, so, you know, I was reacting to it as you folks were too, I have a concern with it, I highlighted that to Justin right off the bat, so, he's very well aware of my concerns, the same concerns everyone has here, so we'll, we'll work through it.
Are there any other businesses that are expected to be impacted like him at this point, or is that to be determined?
TBD, but I would say that we don't, from a right-of-way standpoint, so this is where, so we talk a lot about right-of-way within these types of projects, so, not just the town's right-of-way, but they, the MassDOT considers right-of-way, anything that needs to, any other easements beyond it that would be needed for construction, so, anything that happens, we need approval, so, I mean, that's the main focus here to keep in mind, and, you know, obviously, if I'm Mr. Noto, I wouldn't be providing any easement for this, and I'd be pushing back on it, so. The majority of everything else, though, we own a lot of property along this stretch, right, and everything else is buildings right up to the back, to the back of right-of-way, so, you know, I'm not really envisioning a ton of easement need here, to be honest with you, so I think this should go fairly smoothly, without a ton of right-of-way.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
I also noticed there were three parking lots mentioned, are any of those new parking lots, or are they all existing?
Yeah, they are, so it's expansion of the one, so we have the gravel parking lot that's next to the rail-to-trail today.
Right.
By the Almett headquarters, right? And then, what they want to do is also, and this was in the original design, is have a parking lot that comes off of Richardson as well. So when we did, so you may have recall, we kind of redesigned that corner with the Santander Bank, and we ended up spending some funds and we got a grant to do some work in that area. Part of that actually pushed the entrance for the apartment building that's there to allow us to have like two entrances, so it makes sense. So, you know, we're looking right now, actually, to see if we can advance that parking lot, I know some of the business in there, businesses over there have asked us to do that, so that's something that I'm exploring now, but, but yeah, that's a newie, and then the other one would be an expansion of the gravel one that's there.
Okay, are we repave the one over Almett headquarters and?
Oh, that would all be repaved, yeah, yeah, we're looking at that.
Excellent.
Yeah, as we've been doing the paving work, and I get millings and stuff, we've been pushing it there, so we did a couple of, so I'm planning to try to dress that up as where, you know, in the short term, until we actually pave it, and then at some point, I'm probably gonna come back to talk to you folks about kind of separating that rail-to-trail and the parking lot with something. Maybe the flex posts that we're not, that aren't installed, or something to that effect, but that might make sense.
Then my last question is, I know there's talk of reducing roads to 11 feet, I know there's a lot of pushback over the bike lane at North Ave, have the police chief, Lieutenant Anderson weighed in on that adjustment as well, or not yet?
Well, Lieutenant Anderson would have, because he was part of the TAC with us, so, so he saw it, at this point, you keep in mind, it's also not, it's 11-foot lanes to buffer off the parking that's there, so it's not for the bike lane per se, so I think that's the distinction that they're looking at, it's really for the car doors and folks opening, doesn't mean you can't really use it. I think the other piece is to keep in mind that the parking there is used really during pickup and drop-off, right, I mean, that's really when those spaces are used, so, so that becomes, I think, a lot more usable, if you kind of think about, you know, it's in my mind, it's a big distinction between North Ave and the type of road and the speed limits and all that, because we have a 20 mile an hour speed limit that's there because of the school, so you have a, you know, a much different situation than North Ave.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Butler?
So I'm just trying to understand, like, and again, it's terminology.
Yep.
From my standpoint, what's the difference, I feel like we're using shared-use path instead of bike lane, because we don't want to say that nasty word.
Nope, not true.
But in terms of it's a, it's a street, like, these are all on streets that have full sidewalks, full wide sidewalks, so the notion of it being shared use of pedestrians and bikers, it's, you know, it's a bike lane, is what it is. Other than, like, yes, people are allowed to walk on it, but they're already walking on the sidewalk as well.
Yeah, so you widen out more, so that's the idea, so that you have more room for both of those folks to do it, that's, that's how you do it, and it's also set aside from, from like parking, so parking separates it as well.
Now, I see they begin shared-use path on Water Street, is that in front of the Bank America, is that beginning a shared-use path down towards the rail trail, or is that coming up from the rail trail?
Ask that question again, just so I make sure I understand what you're asking.
Just so I understand, like, where is the shared-use path going from, is it going to Main Street, or is it going sort of from the base of the Bank America building?
Yeah.
Back towards the rail trail?
Yeah, water to, to North Ave, that's where the rail-to-trail will be, so basically, where the, where the school is, it would be over across that whole stretch of Main Street.
No, on that, I'm just trying to understand, it looks like it's on Water Street there, is it beginning at that, at the Bank America building?
Oh, so that's at Smith Street, yes, that's starting there, so originally, the original design had that extended all the way down to the rail-to-trail.
So it's not, yeah, I mean, I guess my point is, is, and so, like, I mean, again, not that I'm rah-rah, but if we do the rail trail, like, my goodness, shouldn't we at least, and we're gonna do a path, essentially a bike lane to there.
Yep.
Why wouldn't we connect those two?
With the, with the shared-use path, you're saying?
Yeah, like, why wouldn't the shared-use path intersect with the rail trail to have it at least be, you know, more useful than the North Ave? Let's not have 20 shared-use paths that all go dead-end.
Yeah, for sure, so, so the situation there, we originally had a shared-use path going all the way down.
Yeah.
And we ran out, we would have to have eliminated a turn lane, it just didn't make sense. So the bike lanes option allows us to use less roadway, I mean, again, we're trying to balance cars, or make sure the cars can move where they need to go, I think is probably more, better way to say it, and then have the bike accommodations, so, again, to get the funding, we need bike accommodations, so we eliminate them, we don't have the funding.
Right, I got you, I know, I get it, and then, I guess the other thing in terms of, and I love Mr. Noto's restaurant, I'm there all the time, his driveway, you do have to back up into the sidewalk, and that, I understand, like, the rationale behind angling them a bit more, and unfortunate, it is unfortunate that it would create, you know, it would create a significant economic hardship for him. I do, you know, I think from, I guess, sorry, I got lost in talking about the Sunny Noto's parking situation, and I guess I'm trying to understand, A, the, we're concerned about one fatality, look, somebody walked in front of a car and got hit and died, and it's terrible, but it, we're gonna eliminate, we're gonna do all this to eliminate that from happening, but we're about to add a bunch of parking in the Bank America parking lot and take away that crosswalk, where you know everybody is going to get out of their cars, go in front of Bank America, and whether you have a crosswalk there or not, people are not gonna do a big you, they're going to, you know.
Yeah, that's, it's true.
People's desire.
Yeah, I hear, well, you also have no man's land there too, because of all the extra pavement and whatnot, so, so we're trying to allocate that a lot better, I mean, I can tell you myself, if I'm there and I park in the parking lot, I use the crosswalk, but that doesn't mean anything, you know, I hear your point.
No, no, you use the crosswalk that they have now, I'm saying, you're talking about getting rid of that crosswalk, you're gonna, I'm going to Cafe Italia, I'm not walking all the way down to Crescent Street and then walking across and then walking back up, that's just not gonna happen, I mean.
Where there might not be a light.
Where there might not be a light, but that's besides the fun.
You still have it at Water Street.
We're gonna cross there.
At Water Street, well, these are comments, in my mind, this is, you know, this is why we do this, and, you know, if, I'm happy if you want to sit down and go over some of these concerns.
No, and by the way.
I mean, I think there's other design stuff, like, that I see that would make sense.
Parking spaces, that doesn't include the four you're taking away from Sunny Noto's?
No, but then you'd add in that huge park, the huge parking lot that we're expanding, that Counsel Fox was asking.
Oh, so you haven't counted the gravel lobby?
We were just focusing in that one corner, right there, at, at Water and Main, and the existing parking lot.
The existing slot.
Yeah, because we had to, because we got a tweak to the, to the parallel spaces, so just to understand the, kind of the parking count there, just to make sure that's clear.
And then, if we do break it up into two sections, it's like $12 million, oh, the other question, Lowell Street to Foster's, is that where all the pilings and the boardwalk is?
Yeah, yeah, through that whole stretch.
Through, from Lowell onward?
Yep, yep, and Salem too, there's a section in Salem as well.
Oh, so we do have to do it in Salem, because I was like, why don't, you know, we could kill the Lowell to Foster until.
We need.
Linfield actually builds it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, well, I mean, technically, we still could, but I think the goal would be to build as much as we can with the state funds, get that done.
Yeah, yeah, with the funds.
And again, I don't know what the timing is really for Linfield, I mean, my goal here is to stay ahead of them, you know, we have less permitting, we have, you know, some portions of the scope are a lot less.
Yeah, it was more just around, like, if, if that was going to be, if it's gonna be $12 million to do the whole thing.
Yep.
And it's gonna be $5 million to do it to Lowell, then just do it to Lowell, and like, we'll come up with the $7 million when, when people can go someplace other than Foster's line.
Right.
No offense to Foster's line people.
Counsel Cardney?
I do want to make a point that some businesses are gonna be concerned about angle parking versus parallel parking.
Understood.
It's a big difference there, in the type of business, especially, you talk about a liquor store, or hot hardware, where people want to pull in, pack the things, and get, personally wipe out two parking spaces by parking the wrong, the wrong things, in parallel parking.
Yeah.
So it's not as efficient as angle parking, so there may be some feedback we're gonna get from the Chamber of Commerce and the.
And I can just chime in on that, John, too, just to see you're aware, so, you know, part of that, we have crash clusters in these areas, so this is like a high, a high-crash cluster locations, like, they compare those to the state of Massachusetts, and we have a couple of them where all of our angle parking is, that's like a problem, so I don't envision them really letting us back off on angle parking, we have a small section downtown, because we were able to widen out, the right-of-way's so wide that we're able to create like a turn lane for you to be able to come out and then go, if we can't have that, I wouldn't expect them to okay it, so, that's why we were so adamant about looking at the parking counts in these areas, so that at least the whole section so that at least the whole section here, we looked at it kind of section by section is how we did it when, back in 2021, to make sure that we have, you know, net increases where we can. There's definitely not net losses. That's important to us, obviously, so.
The parallel parking jumps out from the Envision 2030 plan, right? And it's interesting, as I have been talking to people, I don't, maybe this group knows a lot about the Envision 2030, rather, plan. I'm not sure that that our fellow townspeople know a heck of a lot about it, you know? And that may, you know, there was a, I, there was a lot of public hearing and, you know, there's no question that it wasn't a secret process. It was extremely public. But we may, as we go, and we have a new town plan or we're going to have a new town administrator shortly, we may need to foreground that plan so people understand that it's not just something that dropped out of the sky. Oh, no, we're having X, Y, Z, you know?
Yeah, 100%. So this is, we started with these folks, I'm planning to bring the other folks into. So they have a draft presentation that I've seen that may be in September, depending on your agendas and whatnot. So I'll be talking to you folks about that, too. So we're planning, I think this is good to get the feedback. At least you folks all know you can help give me direction. Any fatal flaws that folks are seeing, it's great to know upfront and, you know, we can correct them to the best of our ability.
Counselor Chines.
Just just on the the angled parking. So this definitely didn't drop out from the sky. I mean, when this was, I mean, this was probably the biggest topic of conversation when the Envision Downtown Revitalization Project kind of kicked off and we did all the charrettes and sort of. I I think, you know, my recollection is the two things that really sort of jumped out were, A, there are just parts of the right of way on Main Street where it's just, it's not wide enough to kind of safely back out. And I think you see that today because it is actually really challenging to back out of some of those spaces, right? Like, if there's someone coming at you, particularly if you're kind of between, you know, two larger cars, you know, there's nowhere for them to kind of go around you. The other issue that came up is there was some concern, if I remember correctly from the traffic engineers, there was some sort of thinking that, you know, kind of in terms of getting out of a parallel parking space relative to an angle parking space, that it was actually considered to be sort of a a safer way of pulling out into traffic, right? Because you're.
Correct.
You're you're not kind of backing in, but you're you're sort of fronting out. And so that was part of the other rationale again for those areas where the right of way was so narrow that there was just, if you backed out and you couldn't see someone coming, there was no, no way for that car to go around you.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not disputing that. It's just been interesting to me that people say, Envision 2030, what on earth are you talking about? You know, I've had, I've had that reaction quite a lot.
No, it's been six years since we had those meetings.
Well, and the, I guess my other thing, and this gets to the angled parking versus straight on. And then I do have a separate question that, you know, I'm sure will create some consternation. But like, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Backing into a parking space on Water Street.
Yep.
In the afternoon, like, in front of Harts. Like, good luck to trying to pull in to, like, forget pulling into a space, because now you can just pull into a space. You got 27, you got my cars back to Franklin Street behind you and you're trying to parallel park on that street? They're definitely going to come at us with torches and pitchforks. The, if we were to look at these, and you talked about breaking it up, the rail trail versus the roadway. Now, I guess, can the rail trail continue without the roadway project?
I mean, technically, all it can, what we run into is you're burning engineering time, right? So they have to then create two sets of plans, all that stuff. All the estimates change, all the stuff that he submitted that now becomes, he has to do another version that cuts portions out, cuts other pieces out, it's just not.
I'm sorry, I thought they were two separate builds.
Are you talking about, oh, I thought you were talking about the rail trail.
I want to do the rail trail, I don't want to do the roadway.
Well, we've, we've already kind of made that decision to, so what we're trying.
We made that decision in '22 and, you know, we.
And, yeah, but again, you're you're losing, you're 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 not optimizing your design funds if you do that. So we could continue to do that, I mean, that's fine, but I'll be coming to you asking for more money to fund the changes. So at this point, I have, I don't.
But there aren't changes.
There are, I mean.
What would there be in terms of?
Because it's the, I I guess I would say.
You've already talked about breaking it into two things.
It's it's a, there's a process. So you submit two sets of plans, it's two different projects, it's two different, all of it becomes two different things. So there's a cost of splitting. I've already spent part of that because we weren't going to be able to get the full project on the tip. So unless we're told that they won't fund this at all, I think the, my recommendation would be to keep it as it is, unless there's a benefit of splitting it, but I, at this point, I'm not recommending it. I would think we want to keep it as we have it scoped.
But I just don't, I don't think we're ever going to get to, and this gets to the third phase of the project. I mean, unless something dramatically changes, we're not going to move to have Main Street have parallel parking from Water Street to to the lake.
It's not Water Street to the lake.
Or Water Street to where.
So there are sections that remain. So we had angled in parking in sections where the right of way was wide enough. But there was a ton of, this was a huge conversation and I.
I know, I know.
I believe we got to a consensus with kind of the.
Five new people here.
So we ended up with a high rate approach. No, I understand that, but I mean, at the same time, these projects take five to 10 years to develop. You know, there's, there's changes over every single year. I mean, if I was doing that, I don't think I'd ever get a project.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're not right to be frustrated or.
Oh, I'm not frustrated.
Or just not right to like feel a sense of frustration, but I'm just saying like, and by the way, at the time, there was enormous outcry about the elimination of angle in parking on Main Street and the notion of eliminating, we already don't have enough parking in downtown. So like, you're just, I don't see, I don't foresee us ever getting the, this is, this is fine. I mean, it's sort of, but you're never going to do it to downtown.
Well, I mean, we're going to have, I'm going to be in front of you to discuss that separately. I'm hoping there's no pitchforks and we'll try to work through it.
So the issue in trying to back that overview. Was for the rail to trail and the Envision from Waters, Water Street, not Main Street. So we know who to go to if you have any other comments?
Please do, I'm always looking for them.
And then we'll look forward to the public hearing likely in September.
September, October, I think, yeah, we'll see when we can get it in as quick as we can. I'd like to do that as long as you folks are all on board with that.
Great.
Yep, okay.
Okay, any other comments or, okay?
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, you don't get to leave though.
I know.
Moving on to item 6A, Traffic Advisory Committee Recommendations.
Sure, so we have two recommendations before you in your packet. One for four foot separate bicycle separation.
Thank you, Justin, sorry.
I think he's already gone.
He's still there. Bye, thank you.
So, so, yeah, so before you have two, two recommendations from the Traffic Advisory Committee. The first is for four foot bicycle separation signs and the second is for Mystic Highlands Greenway Guide signs. Both of these were requests that came to the Traffic Advisory Committee from Counselor Christie. We met on July 25th to discuss them both. The first one, if we go to the four foot bike separation signs, the proposal before you would be to install signs in 14 locations, all of the main entry points within the town. We would recommend that's the only location that they get installed so we don't have kind of ad hoc signage going up all throughout town. The other communities have kind of taken this approach. I think it's an effective one and I think it makes a lot of sense. Aside from that, that seems pretty straightforward. I don't know if you want to take them separate or if you want me just to go to the other.
Sure, let's do them separately.
Okay.
Any questions about the four foot separation bicycle signage, Counselor Carney?
I just want to, when you put these signs up, you're going to violate another law to pass bikes on every, every, every road that has a double, double yellow line, okay? And and this is, this is a way of forcing people to be, do something. You have to break one law to to accomplish it. You are, you drive just Main Street and you're driving down Main Street where those markers are for bikes. You can't get around one biker. Now, sometimes it's two, one person and bike on that lane, you have to cross the W L line.
Yep.
So we have two, you know, we have to violate one law to put a sign up to say we're going to, we're going to follow this law. It's just, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, so there was, so 2024, they did have legislation that, you know, required everyone to pass them within four feet and to allow you to cross over the double yellow. Granted, there's another law that says you can't cross the double yellow. So just to be clear, that's the, there's definitely some, some confusion between the two. But there was a, there was a law that that required it, that allows it apparently, but, you know.
I bet you, but the fact is, you have, you have to break a law to obey a law. And that's, then that's what we're endorsing here.
Yep.
I'm not against the signs.
I have to, I have to interject at that point, if I, if I may. I I don't think that's accurate to say that you're breaking the law by allowing four foot passing. Motor vehicles have to respect the double yellow line anytime there's oncoming traffic or stop traffic up in front of them. I mean, you, any of us can see it driving all the time where motorists drive over the W L line for any number of reasons. And to my knowledge, in the research I've done, I've never heard that that is illegal for a motor vehicle if it's like passing a landscaping crew or if it's passing an emergency vehicle. A motor vehicle has to cross the W L line. So it's not an exception specifically for allowing this, this four foot safe passing zone for what is called vulnerable road users, which are pedestrians and bikes under this statute that was adopted in 2023.
Did they, excuse me, Madam?
Yeah, Counsel.
John, did they address that in the statute? Was that, is that in writing somewhere?
It's my understanding and everything I've read that you, that it is legal to pass a double yellow line for a motorist if there's blockage in the road or if there's a vulnerable road user. The motorist is still responsible for making sure that there's not oncoming traffic as you cross the double yellow line. But I mean, you see this hundreds of times a day all over Massachusetts where cars, trucks are passing over the double yellow line. And it's not just to pass a bicyclist. So this notion, John, that, you know, we're breaking one law to enforce another, I think, I have to, I have to, I have to put my foot down on that, I think that's just flat out wrong. Because you have to have the passing on the W L line. They do it in multiple states all over the country.
Counselor Chines.
You know, one of the things that I think is important to clarify is regardless of whether we put a sign up or not, I mean, state law is you have to give four feet to to a biker. And so I I think this discussion is a little bit misplaced. I think it's more the question of, you know, do we want to have the sign out there as a reminder? I have noticed that our surrounding towns do have signs generally at the border of the town.
Yep.
You know, you don't have them every quarter mile or whatever, which is not what's being proposed here. But they do have it, you know, particularly in some of those major roads that where, you know, you do have traffic and and a number of bikes. So I think this is pretty consistent with what I've seen in Reading, what I've seen in Stonem, what I've seen in Melrose. I think it's reasonable.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and great, if it's in Melrose, Reading and Stonem, then we've all seen the signs and we know state law. Like, I, I don't, it's, I mean, it's a ridiculous effort, but I, I don't, I don't understand why we would be perpetrating more signs, especially either put them every half mile or put, putting them at the borders does nothing. Like, what are, oh, I'm driving by, oh, now, I can't, can't, I can't give them, I got to give my people four feet. Thanks for reminding me. I mean, people, this is not a, this is, again, the abandonment of common sense and sort of like, why we would need a sign there, unless you're planning on actually like hardcore enforcing it, which we're definitely not going to do. So I mean, this sign and and to be, you know, to a certain degree, the next one, I'm not in favor of. I'm surprised that it was so, so unanimously accepted. Because there was a lot of debate at the, at the incredibly long and like, you know, congrats to you, good luck to you on like shortening those meetings, that's your first.
Oh, it's great.
Yeah.
Any other?
I think I'd like to add that, I'd just like to respond to one comment there that my colleague, Counselor Butler, made. I don't think this, I wouldn't say that putting up these signs is a fruitless effort. I've seen, I've seen trucks and cars not giving proper, proper passing distance in any number of situations in Wakefield over the past several years. You know, this was, this was a law passed after a lot of effort in the legislature. The former passing minimum distance was three feet. This law just extended it to four feet. And that was a recognition of the number of serious injuries and crashes that happen when motor vehicles are overtaking bikes.
I'm not arguing with you about that. I'm arguing with you that the sign's going to make a bit of difference.
Well, I think, I think if more people see it, I think, you know, the repetition of it would be, would be beneficial. Even as bills presented it, putting the signs at the, of the key entry points to main roads, I think there's, I think there's some good common sense that backs that up.
I think the only thing that I would add, Counselor Chines had said that he had seen these signs at the various entry points of the other towns. Had you ever seen them or noticed them until this thing came up?
Yeah, I noticed Stonem did them a while ago.
Okay.
Counselor Fox?
I watched the TAC meeting twice and suffered through it twice. I apologize for you, sitting there live once, I watched it twice all the way through. Lieutenant Anderson and you were joking about sign pollution.
Oh, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we were joking per se, but I mean. We both believe it's a thing. I mean, we don't want to put signs everywhere.
Right. The next one I talked about is 76 signs around town. This one is, how many?
14.
Right, so we're about 90 signs.
Oh, yeah.
Being proposed tonight. It just, it just seems excessive to me. I don't see why we need these signs at the border. The law is the law, you know? If there's no speeding sign, you know not to go 60 miles an hour on a road without a speeding sign on it. Lieutenant Anderson pointed out, we don't have signage on certain roads that are no throughway or dead end. People don't go crashing through a cul-de-sac because they don't see a dead end sign. I just, I don't get it. I struggle with this one. And the next one we're going to get to as well.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we looked at it, didn't see really an issue why it shouldn't be per se. But I mean, again, we're leaving it, it's a, I think these are policy discussions, honestly. It's not regulatory.
I definitely appreciate the work you did.
Yeah, regulatory, we're going to come in and recommend, we're going to explain why we're going to do all those things, guide signs and, you know, all these other types of signs. I mean, they're, you know, we get a lot of requests for them, you know, a lot of them come through as long as there's no, not a reason why we shouldn't install it. I mean, that's kind of how we've been handling them and I think that's how we'll continue to handle them and let you folks decide what you want to do. If you come up with a separate policy on how these should happen, we'd be, I'm happy to look into that as a future discussion. However you folks want to do it.
Counselor, Counselor.
As I thought about this, I, I, in my head, at first I thought, oh, what are we going to put up a sign that says, you know, motorists must stop at red lights, like, this is the law, everybody just needs to obey the law. And then I was reminded that it's, it's a new law, it just passed last year. So I distinguish this item that we're, from the next one that we're going to discuss. And I think when there's something new that we all need to be paying attention to, I don't think it's a bad thing necessarily to be reminding people, especially 14 places around the perimeter of the town to me does not feel overly burdensome. We'll talk about the next.
Sure.
Article in a minute, but, but, you know, I was, I was, I kind of went back and forth too on, you know, the need and does it advance what we're trying to do in Wakefield? And is it, does it create more awareness, does it create more safety? I don't know, but the burden seemed fairly low to me on this one.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the four feet claret signs and the locations recommended by the town engineer.
Second.
Okay, and roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley. Oh, sorry, any just further discussion matter of practice? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley.
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
No.
Counselor Consus?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
No.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Okay, moving on to the Mystic Highlands Greenway Guide.
Sure, so, so guide signs for the Mystic Highland Greenway. So this was identified within the Bike and Ped Plan that was approved back in 2024, early '24. We finalized that towards the end of '24. Basically, the Mystic Highlands Greenway is looking to collect, to connect Malden and the Trittown Greenway, Lynn Fels Parkway, Wakefield, and then eventually our new Lynn Field and Wakefield rail trails, as well as Lake Quinnipowhat. So the Greenway was included as a recommended regional corridor in the plan. Aside from that, I mean, we're showing essentially 38 signs per direction to just, to show the route that was discussed and accepted within the, within the, the Bike and Ped Plan. Essentially, our discussion was that, you know, it was included within the original Bike and Ped that was approved here. So if you folks wanted to include it, then potentially the signs would make sense to install. They would be on, most of these things would be put on existing, existing posts. I would recommend that if we, if you do grant in the, or approve it, we would have some type of public outreach to let folks know before we actually deploy them. There's no cost to the town aside from labor, as this was included within a grant that the Mystic Highlands Greenway Coalition that we are a member of received back in 2024. We did not put in with the grant. They did that unilaterally as we had the ongoing Bike and Ped discussions going on. So we, Aaron and I both were uncomfortable moving forward as a participant, but they chose to add our signs in as well. So that's where we are and I'd be happy to talk further with any questions.
Counselor Carney.
I, this is one that, I'm sure Steve Mayo probably shared it with, with somebody. He had a sign in his office, it's been there ever since I got elected, it was before that too. And it was all about, the sign was in there and Steve used an example to tell me the fact that there was a lot of push. fact that there was a lot of pushback from the town council on the proliferation of signs, and they didn't want these signs to go up. Now, I'm sure you.
Just correct that, because there were pushback from individual counselors. I don't think we as a council ever voted on that.
It's a previous council, I'm, I'm not.
Even then, though, I think it was individual counselors' pushback.
Well, to that point, it was, it's an issue right now down at the Nocella Playground where people letting their dogs go free and, and fouling up the kids' playground. And, and so there's, he had a sign in his office that wanted to put it all over the parks and say basically, you know, hey, honor the rule, you know, please take care of your, your, your dogs. And I've seen this, and I'm sure you must witness this from time to time, because most, 90%, 95% of the dog owners are very, very responsible. They have their baggies with them and they, like, friends of Lake Quinapowit, put them on the poles, they're on the lake, you can get them there. But you'll see people stop. They'll have their dog on a leash, and then they'll do one of these. And you know what they're gonna do, you know? They'll poop and scoop. I mean, it's, 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 it's people will take advantage and break these rules, and they're fouling up the playground. I, I did stop by Nocella today, and it's, it's not a, it's not a very nice cot playground. They've got stones there and what have you, and up ahead of the lake, they, it's very nice, they put down some soft, some soft materials so the kids will play around. But my point is, you know, not putting up signs on, on a playground for cots to protect them, and, and we're putting up, how many signs around town? I mean, you talk about proliferation of signs, this is crazy. You know, and, and to me, it's, it's, it's an abstraction of fact that people are looking at that sign and, and they're not looking at the signs you really want to follow. So I'm opposed to any of these signs going up. I think it's a publicity thing. I think it's something to promote something. I'm not, I'm not in favor of it at all. I don't want any of these signs to go up.
An informational question. So the, the recommendation from the TAC is 76 signs. You mentioned, I think you said 38 signs.
In each direction.
Oh, in each direction, okay. Thank you, I was just trying to reconcile with two numbers.
Because you're going both ways, yeah. Most of them are in the same locations, that would be on the same post, just telling you, telling you to take a left, the other one telling you to take a left, right? So that's the idea.
Thank you.
And we did discuss this during the Bike and Ped Plan. There was a council that asked if this would happen. I said, well, I think this is a discussion that you folks will have in the future, so here we are. So this has been discussed before, for sure.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say since, if I can add some comments at this point.
Sure, go ahead.
I was the one who made the recommendation to the Traffic Advisory Committee. As Bill has, you know, eloquently said, you know, this was one of the, one of the neighborhood connectivity initiatives that was included in the Bike and Ped Plan. City of Malden, City of Melrose, Senator Jason Lewis's office had been managing this initiative for, to my knowledge, at least four or five years. So I put the recommendation to the TAC to put forward what I think is a pretty common sense, a wayfinding way for this additional greenway of which, you know, we've been a member of the Coalition, and we're one of the few communities that hasn't installed the wayfinding signs. I hear some people, I, I, I agree to a certain extent with the sign pollution issue that's been raised in this discussion, but I think for the value of Wakefield joining this, this regional, this regional greenway, I think the, you know, the benefits in this case outweigh the, outweigh the costs. And that's, that was kind of my logic for putting it to the Traffic Advisory Committee. Thank you.
So I, so I was part of previous town councils, and I did, I actually had Kevin look into it, because we, we were gonna do a sign audit and have a presentation on the number of signs that are in town.
So we have done, we have part, we have started that.
Yes, Kevin passed on some information, and I look forward to a new town administrator and a new planner, and you, and Traffic Advisory, and us having that conversation.
Yes.
Because the thing is, once signs go in, they're hard to get out. And, you know, I live in the Greenwood section, and there are signs. It's fascinating driving in Melrose to Wakefield, and just every foot, there's a sign.
Yes.
In Greenwood. All different information, and I, I learn a lot, but I, I do think we have an overabundance, and I understand we got a grant for this. 76 to me is a lot. John, I hear you. I don't think we've built this connectivity between the other pathways. We can debate that. I feel like we wait on the 76 until we do a side inventory, and we have a better understanding of all the signs. You know, we, we have merchant-only parking. This was, this at the, like, in front of the library, in front of Town Hall, and we're really proud to create merchant-only parking. Every single space doesn't need a merchant-only parking sign.
Yeah, we talked about, we've talked about that, yeah.
So there's a lot of these things in town. I think we, I think it's a broader discussion, and I, I think I kind of feel what others feel. You know, I, I understand the, the, the number for our previous votes seemed logical. This just seems a little aggressive.
Counselor Butler?
Oddly enough, and I'm probably voting against, but I find this one more palatable than the previous one we voted on, because at least it is giving information versus just, I feel like our previous vote and our previous vote around no idling, which I think that passed, didn't it? Oh, we don't have no idling up?
I think you mean when the, we had to approve the not idling.
Oh, right, yeah, because the law said, yeah, 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 yeah.
Which we did, we did approve the, following the state law.
Yeah, the ridiculous law. You know, I'm all in favor of, you know, keeping our eyes closed if we, if we need to. Yeah, I, I mean, I think 76 is a lot, but at least it's giving some information to, I assume, to, it's mainly around the greenway and around biking.
Bike and Ped folks, right? So they know where the corridor is. There are regional maps that show it. That's basically what it's showing.
Counselor Chines?
So I would maybe make a proposal to table this until we have the larger sign discussion. You know, I, I make the motion not necessarily opposing this, because I, I do think that there is value in signing the greenway. I, I kind of look at it sort of akin to like the signs for Route 129, right? Like, it's a state-designated way. It, it's not unreasonable that that be signaled to people from an informational standpoint. But I, I do think the question of the sign placement is one that I, I guess I'd, I'd love to see a little bit more discussion on.
Sure.
You know, do we need 76? I mean, obviously, there are places where the greenway turns, where you're gonna have to have a sign, but, you know, how often, how frequently are we placing them sort of before, before then? I, I think that's a valid thing to come back with, and so, you know, my motion would be to table this until such time as we're able to look at this in context of the larger sign inventory.
Do you need a second?
I would need a second. That is a motion.
Do I have a second? I will second. Further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't just vote on, like, I mean, I grant that you're not in favor of having a vote on this, but I don't think we have a good reason. I would vote against this motion, because I think we should just vote on whether or not we put these signs in. Because even if we vote against it, there's nothing keeping us from putting the signs up again if you just, if we build out the greenway and we build everything out. There's nothing keeping us from doing this. Is there a subsequent point?
I would just say there's a.
We can vote no and then vote yes, is I guess what I'm asking.
You've done it before, so yeah, definitely can.
I don't know why we wouldn't vote and just, you know, have.
I mean, we can certainly, we can vote on it something in every meeting if we wanted to. I think, you know, my, my rationale.
This is something that was brought to us to vote on.
It was, but that doesn't mean we have to vote on it. You know, my, my rationale is, I think that there's, you know, there's the question of sort of the policy of do we want it signed at all, as well as the question of the execution. And I, I think to me, there are some questions on the execution that I think perhaps warrant some more work and discussion and validation by the DPW and the Engineering Department.
Counselor Fox?
But again, I mean, we could bring it up any other time we wanted to.
Right, I, I agree with that, but I also feel like we should just make a decision, and then if people, because one of my concerns was that, that there is no connectivity here, and I am very loathe to put a lot of signs up for things that if I'm riding a bike, you know, even with the sign, go this way, then I still don't know where to go. And, you know, when I, when I'm in that position, I'm relying on my GPS on my phone, which is completely separate issue, I understand. So to me, I would rather just make a decision on this, and then if there's tweaking to do or the infrastructure becomes different as we go down in the future, great, and this could be revisited. But for me, I'm, I've, I, I feel like I have enough information here to make a decision.
Counselor Fox?
I'm also against it for the same reason. I think we have enough information. The fact that you've asked to have a count of how many signs are in town means we have too many signs already. So if you want to know what we have already, and you want to add another 76 to that, you know it's already too many signs. Especially if we're not doing dead ends and other things that Lieutenant Anderson mentioned.
Counselor Chines?
The pushback that I'd have on that is, I, I don't think that every sign has equal value, and that's part of what the sign inventory will show. So for example, the, you know, part, four-hour merchant signs, like, if we have one at every parking spot and we have four parking spots in a row, like, that's a low-value sign. Relative to that, this may be or may not be higher value. Dead-end signs may or may not be higher value. I, I think that the, I, I think that it's the number and the caliber and the intent of the signs that's part of, I think, what we need to look at, and so I don't think it's as simple as just saying, we have too many signs, don't add more. You know, my intention, my hope would be that as we look at signs, you know, we would make critical decisions around what's more or less important, because there are some signs that absolutely are important. You know, we may decide that this is or isn't one. I mean, you know, that's, that's kind of a, a separate piece, but I mean, you know, we're not gonna eliminate every sign in town, and, and I think objectively saying that we have too many doesn't necessarily mean that one category of sign or another is, is right or wrong.
I mean, to go with the merchant signs you mentioned, you've already paid for them, you've already installed them. Why, why remove them now?
Because they look ugly. You know, and so, and again, if, if, is it more, is it helpful to give me the information that this spot is merchant-only when I know because the spot before and after it is? That, I think that's, again, what I would classify as a low-value sign versus a potential.
No, I, I agree with you. I, I don't know why they put up four signs in those spots in the first place, but someone made that decision. And obviously, there are signs around town that are out of date, there's clubs in town that no longer exist, and there's a sign as you cross into Greenwood, from Melrose, there's a bunch of clubs listed. I don't know if many of those are active anymore. Those could probably come down. I just think the 76 is a little, little much. I have no problem with a smaller amount guiding the way. I just don't see how the number came to be 38 in each direction, and it's still a lot.
Well, I can just, on one thing, the, the Coalition of which, you know, Wakefield's a member, the Mystic Highlands Greenway Coalition, they went out and actually walked and rode the route to look, to determine what the number of signs would be needed to, to sign the route from one, one end of town to the other. So that's generally speaking how they arrived at that number for, for 76. And as Bill said, on half of that going, so northbound and half going southbound.
Okay, so we have a motion. That was seconded. Jonathan, can you repeat your motion?
Yep, the motion would be to table the vote until such time as we have the larger sign inventory completed.
Roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley.
Can I just ask one clarification question to Bill? How, how, how much time do we think a, a town-wide sign inventory is going to, to take?
So I actually had started one prior to the request, so, just so we had a better asset management for them. So we started that a couple of years ago. We pretty much have a draft at this point. It's whatever the analysis that you folks are looking for me to do, that's, that, that's where we're at. So I could, I could move forward with that as, as a priority project when you folks just give me a direction on what you want me to present.
All right, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
John, how do you vote on the motion?
So this is where, and we're voting on Counselor Chines's motion to table, table it until a future time?
Yes.
I would vote in favor of his, his motion.
Counselor Fox?
No.
Counselor Constance?
No.
Counselor Butler?
No.
Counselor Carney?
No.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion fails.
I move that we don't put any of these signs up.
I don't think we have to vote on that, then.
Well, then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, I, I think we just, we just move on.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
We'll be seeing you a couple of times in September.
Looks that way, yes.
So, thank you.
No problem. Good to see you all, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, item 7A.
Madam Chair, move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Town Day Beer Garden to Christopher, I'm gonna apologize right now for Butcher is his last name, to catch for September 27, 2025.
John? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
I had a question.
Counselor Fox?
A few months ago, there was a presentation from the Board of Health about not having alcohol at children's events, because alcohol's bad to show to children. I'm just surprised the Town Day is gonna have alcohol after that, almost hour-long presentation, as a town-sponsored event.
So they do have a Buckley's detail that monitors.
I know, I've been there. I'm just, I'm just curious why she did this very long elaborate presentation on it, and where it was specifically said that we shouldn't have alcohol at events with children, and since it's a town-sponsored event, and there's a lot of restaurants that have alcohol in the area, why would we have the beer garden there, based on that? That's the question. I don't, I don't know how these things usually work.
So the Board of Health is coming up with a policy on alcohol. She was giving a presentation.
Yes.
We didn't take a vote on anything.
No, but she did a really good presentation on.
Okay.
On alcohol, that's all.
Counselor Carney?
I would suggest the fact, there's a lot of fundraisers that make money for these organizations that have these, get these liquor licenses, and there's, there's a lot of good reason they have them, and there's adults there monitoring, so I'm not, I'm not sure that, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
The fact that kids may be around at this particular event, but.
Well, who's the beneficiary of the beer garden at Town Day? Is it a nonprofit, Chamber?
I'm not even sure.
Counselor Chines, did you have something to say?
No, confess.
I'm good.
Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley.
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Constance?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Madam Chair, move to approve a common victular and entertainment license for Gongcha at 410 Main Street.
Any further discussion? Counselor Chrisley?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Constance?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes, I thought you were asking Counselor Chrisley if he had a question. That's okay.
Oh, no, I didn't. On these, I don't usually do.
No, 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 I'm good.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
And Madam Chair, move to approve a common victular license for Monica's Pizza and Pasta at 1117 Main Street.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Constance?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Carney? Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Going on to item eight A, warrants.
Can't believe there's anything specific you want to discuss.
Nothing, these are just normal course of action warrants.
I signed the warrants, and I'm not going to speak every meeting. I just think if people have questions, they can ask Kevin, but I've reviewed them and signed them.
Yeah, nothing stuck out that you wanted to share with us? Businesses going on as usual? Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you. And so we've also started fiscal year 2026.
That's correct.
Yeah, great, okay. Item nine, approval of minutes?
Madam Chair, move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes for July 14, 2025, and July 23, 2025.
Second. Second, great, thank you. Roll call vote, Counselor Chrisley?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Constance?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Item 10, any announcements? Counselor Chines?
Just a couple of quick things, a couple of things coming up. The EV showcase, which is now sort of an, I don't know if it's annual or semi-annual event that the Environmental Sustainability Committee has put on, that's coming up in a couple of weeks, Saturday, the 24th, at Vets Field from 10 to 1. You know, I've participated, I have an EV, so I've brought my car there to have people look at. It actually has been amazingly well-attended the last few years, and I think particularly as people are car shopping. If you're thinking about an EV, show up, ask questions, it's a good time to learn more. Also, did want to highlight a couple of events coming up in September, which, believe it or not, is before our next regular Town Council meeting. On Saturday, the 6th, the annual ALS Walk will be happening on the Common that morning, which is a big event in town, and certainly one that a number of folks here do participate in, so keep an eye out for that. And also, Porch Fest is back that day, and I believe that Counselor Butler is one of our Porch Fest hosts this year, so.
Counselor Butler has three bands and found out that his buddy's trip is that same weekend, so my wife is going to be hosting that solo. Sorry, Deb.
All right, so enjoy Porch Fest. There are like seventy places in town to go, and one of them is Counselor Butler's house without him. But it was a great event last year, you know, one of the highlights of the year, and I'm really excited that it's back, and big thank you to all the organizers and the volunteers that put that on. And then finally, just want to mention that I do have office hours next Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 at the library, so come by and say hello.
Thank you. Counselor Carney, do you have a hand up?
I guess what I want is, come on, the matter is not anticipated for the agenda.
Okay, let's do announcements first. Counselor Constance?
I wanted to mention that the Economic Development Council still has arts and creative events grant money available from ARPA funding. I think I had mentioned this before, but we've received a number of grants that have been approved, and it's exciting, and there's events happening around town that are art-related for the community. There's still funding available, so if you're considering filing a grant application, please go on the EDC website on the town, the town website, and have a look at the application. It's a very straightforward application. And related to the Economic Development Council, there's one open seat available. So if you are interested in serving, I think you submit a letter of interest to Sherri Dalton, and she'll circulate it to the Economic Development Council. Thank you.
Can I just add to that, too?
Yes.
We also have so many spaces to have an arts or cultural event now, between the Albion Culture Exchange, the new, you know, kind of stage space up on the top floor of the senior center, so, yeah, get those applications in.
Absolutely.
I thought you were going to also mention that we have lots of committees that are looking for volunteers, and if you go to our new redesigned website, you can hear about them, including the Economic Development Committee. But there's other committees, so if you feel like volunteering and helping our town out, please check that out. Any other announcements? Okay, item 11 matters not anticipated for the agenda.
As I mentioned earlier, I would like on the agenda for next week, the discussion of the kitty parks, and how we can somehow improve the conditions of them from irresponsible dog owners. And I'll have the sign that was in Steve's office, I have that out in my car, I'll bring that to the next meeting. And I want to, I'm wondering how we should approach the fact that I'd like to approach the Economic Development Council or the Chamber Commerce in getting sponsors for these kitty parks, like they do the greenways and the areas and the flowers around the town, because I think that would be great publicity, having a small sign saying this is monitored or maintained by a certain company. And the one in Nacelle is in horrendous shape, and I don't think kitties should be playing on peystone. And I think they use some sort of a fiber up on the one on the head of the lake, it's excellent, and it's fenced in. And if you fence in the one down in Nacelle, you could make something out of it, and the kids can enjoy it. And it's only to protect against those few people who let their dogs go astray, and then you bring your child down there and have to face that. I wouldn't let my child, if I had a youngster at that age, I wouldn't let them do it. I'd like to discuss that next week's meeting, and anybody else who might have some ideas regarding that, maybe we can solve some issues there.
Yeah, I think, so I will add it to a future September meeting, and just for you to know, Erin Kakinda, who's the Economic Development Manager, is coming to a September meeting to talk about all the work that they've been doing, and so that would be an opportunity. But that is a good, that seems like a good collaboration, so I'm looking at Stacy and Doug, who I think are the liaisons, so we can continue that conversation. But she'll be coming to a meeting in September to talk about the use of ARPA funds that we've given to that committee and the sign project that's been really successful, and then I'm sure some of the other work, so we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Different type of sign.
Signs, facades. Facades, yes, facades, yes. Counselor Chines?
Could I just ask, Mr. Gill, if we can get an update on the Republic Services strike and, you know, where we are in terms of what the DPW's been able to do, you know, kind of money back from Republic in terms of, you know, dollars that we've been spending? Any sense as to where things are on that?
I know Joe Conway is tracking the expenditure from the town side. Right now, the First Republic, it's status quo, that there is no update to give, that they, the two sides are still, I'm not even sure if they're talking right now. But going forward, Joe is tracking, and other communities are looking to withhold from their monthly payments, the additional cost to the surrounding communities, so.
So are folks doing trash pickup right now?
Yes, they are.
And are we withhold, have we been withholding payment thus far?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I know I've seen, following up, just, probably we should maybe have Joe in at some point, but yeah, in terms of, I know I've seen Republic trucks out there picking up, and I assume that's non-unified workers coming in from out of state to like, but they just don't have enough for us, or we've declined their?
They do not have enough to fill all their communities.
All their communities, so.
You're getting, you know, you may get two trucks today.
Okay.
And it fluctuates, so it's not a hundred percent.
We're taking what we can get, but you're filling in.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're doing better than other communities, because we have our DPW picking up, or I know someone, their trash is Tuesday, Republic might get them on Friday right now.
Correct.
So we're doing better than a lot of others.
I think DPW's doing a great job. They haven't missed a beat in our neighborhood, so really hats off.
Our appreciation to them, we have to do something for the eyes, but this is all of it. Yeah, doing a, yeah, a great job. Eyes and one, I'm sorry.
We, yeah, we, I met with Joe last week, and I asked him to pass on our things, the job well done, so we're saying it again, Kevin, if you could pass it on.
I will.
We've only heard raves, rave reviews, and they also, Joe is tracking everything, and we have not, I think it was my understanding, too, that we haven't paid them, they're in breach of their contract.
Right.
So I know our solicitor is working on the letter with that, and they haven't come to a resolution, right? I know there was supposedly a meeting with the governor, but I don't know if anything came up with that.
I don't believe anything happened, no.
But we are very fortunate that they had the force, that Joe and his team had the foresight to plan ahead for that.
I appreciate you making sure we're not paying them for work they're not doing.
Are we collecting, we're not, are we billing them the $2,500 a day, isn't that what we are on?
I think it's up to $2,500 a day, so we could deduct, yes.
Any other matters not anticipated for the agenda? I'd like to just give a update. We are meeting tomorrow and Thursday to interview four candidates for town administrator. We'll be meeting on Tuesday and Thursday starting at 6:00 PM, and we are meeting at Town Hall, not here, so everyone, just a reminder to be there at 6:00, 6:00 PM at Town Hall. And you have the materials, they're on the website of the four candidates. I think how we will set it up is each counselor will be, get to ask two questions, and we'll kind of do a round robin and ask two questions of each of the candidates, and with them, you know, introducing themselves to us and hoping we get through fourteen questions in an hour. Does that sound good to everyone?
We only budgeted an hour.
Yeah.
That's a poor plan.
That is what our search firm said.
Our search firm is out of their mind. Every other search they've done, like, if you go on the websites for all the other town administrators, two people, it's three hours, it's an hour and a half. And I mean, I think it's going to be an hour and a half.
I think we did an hour and fifteen. We're going to talk fast. We're going to try, we're going to try to keep on our schedule.
Number two, you can show up a little late.
Okay, then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Chrisley?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Yes.
Counselor Constance?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself is yes. I'm adjourning our meeting until our next regular Town Council meeting, which will be tomorrow, August 12, 2025. Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.